Okay. My fault. Okay, and good morning, and we have a great deal of levity here this morning, right? So, welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance. And for the viewers, we thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore, and on my right is Vice Chair Commissioner, and Vice Chair and Commissioner Todd Wilcham, and Commissioner Bill Avery. And I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. And so assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, and Kelly Lindgren at Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. And will you all join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and joining, and thank you so much for joining in. And joining with, joining us now also is Larry Hudkins. So, Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Opening Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, our minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 31st, 2016.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve minutes of last week's meeting. Any discussion? Any corrections, I should say? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through June 7th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve all claims processed through June 7th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are special presentations. Commissioners Award of Excellence's main winner Connie Rourke, Human Services, in a category of productivity and customer relations. And I have a nomination here, I'll read. Connie Rourke has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence's winner for May 2016. She works as General Assistance Representative for the General Assistance Division of Human Services, and began working for the county on June 18th, 2007. She was nominated by Cynthia Covert, General Assistance Officer, in a category of productivity and customer relations. In her nomination, Ms. Covert states Connie is responsible for processing and payment of non-medical claims, monitoring and managing social security and Medicaid status for clients, as well as providing receptionist coverage and other duties as needed. One of the most important and time-consuming responsibilities that Connie has in obtaining reimbursements for medic, medical providers, once a GA client is Medicaid eligible. Connie is very diligent and quite successful in her ability to work with Medicaid and these providers. Connie has been able to obtain revenues through the reimbursements that total across the four million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars from June 2008 to April 2016. That is an average of five hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars per year. Prior to 2008, revenues from reimbursements totaled eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and five dollars. From 2004 to 2007, a yearly average of two hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Connie Rourke with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of May 2016.
Very nice. Okay, well, Connie, on behalf of the Board and the county, we would like to present you with this Service of Productivity and Customer Relations Award. And you were right over here, okay?
Thank you so much. This has been my favorite job. I've learned so much and been so well supported.
Come on up. And you know what? We just really appreciate your service. I mean, it's been, how many years did you work here now?
It'll be nine years next week, yeah.
Nine years? Yeah, nine years, okay, so nine years, and those nine years went by really fast.
They did.
And you know what? I understand that you just have a really big trip coming up. June 10th is your last day?
Yes, we're leaving the 15th, and we're taking the dogs, and...
And we're taking the dog, and we're taking the dogs.
Yeah, we're not coming back.
You're not coming back?
No, not. That's not a trip.
Well, you know what? There's one thing that's probably going to happen. You'll have a lot of people coming to see you.
We hopefully do.
Yeah, and you know, aloha is goodbye.
Yes, it is.
But it is also welcome out there, hello there. And so, you know, again, you've had a very outstanding time of service here. We really appreciate that.
Oh, thank you.
And enjoy your retirement.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And I just want to add, too, that Cynthia had, or Cynthia is the one that nominated her. She's been supervising her this entire time. I just had the pleasure of meeting Connie a little over a year ago, but I will tell you, her job responsibilities are working with Medicaid, trying to get reimbursements from Medicaid, and with, from service providers. And you would think that doing that every day would be rather...
Frustrating?
Thank you, yes. And yet Connie is one of the most pleasurable people that I've ever met. She is always joking around, she's always happy, she is always just a fun person to be around at work. So, I, we're all gonna miss you, and Cynthia, do you want to add anything? I know...
No, I just want to say thank you, Connie, for all of your years of service with Lancaster County General Assistance, and we will miss your zen ways.
Thank you, ladies. Oh, and Connie, would you introduce your family?
This is my husband Dennis.
Uh-huh.
And he's taking, he's done the front of this big move. The only thing I was responsible for was the dogs. And they just about didn't get booked, so...
Well, and it's nice to have so many of your coworkers here to support you as well. And I think the one component we haven't mentioned is the clients, and I'm sure that you will be missed by them as well, and all the ways that...
They'll miss me, but...
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Next is recognition of emergency management Deputy Director Mark Hosking for outstanding performance in preparing for the Guardians of Freedom Airshow, Jim David Sayer, Emergency Management Director. Would you, would you like me to go ahead and read this letter?
Would, please, yes, sir.
For his title, his tireless work and dedicated effort to, to the overall success of the Guardians of Freedom Airshow, Emergency Management Director Mark Hosking deserves to receive recognition from the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. Planning and preparation of the airshow started in earnest in the fall of 2015. Mark scheduled and hosted a full slate of meetings with designated representatives from the primary participating agencies. The Blue Angels require host venues to conduct a series of mass casualty airplane crash drills and exercises in the months and weeks leading up to their performance. The exhaustive planning process included scheduling, conducting and critiquing three tabletop exercises, and a full-scale exercise. The target audience for this tabletop exercise were first responders, healthcare facilities, and behavioral mental health providers. Each exercise was well-attended and very well-received. The April 13th full-scale exercise was the culmination of planning and preparation for the airshow. More than 200 people from 42 agencies participated. This exercise realistically simulated a fiery crash at the Lincoln Municipal Airport involving two aircraft and dozens of casualties. With the base operation at the airport and another base at the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, several plane crash victims were transported to area hospitals and healthcare facilities for triage and treatment of their injuries. The after-action critique of this exercise not only identified their strengths currently in place to handle a mass casualty incident, but also focused on areas of improvement to consider to ensure we are ready to meet every increasing demand in the future. During all four exercises, Mark implemented and supervised the use of our Salamander credentialing system to attack, to track attendance and actions of the participants. This was significant because the system was used during all three days of the airshow to track 2,270, 2,271 participating individuals from 166 agencies in 17,051 hours they logged. The system seamlessly integrated the military system to account for all personnel. Since circumstances dictated he would be the first one on the scene and the last one out, Mark shouldered the burden of 12 to 14-hour workdays throughout the three-day airshow. In, in a cooperative effort, Mark organized and scheduled fellow emergency managers from South, from the Southeast Region and support staff from the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency to assist with the credentialing. Ten of the 14 counties in the region were represented. Participating emergency managers gained valuable real-world, real-world experience operating in a Salamander system during a large-scale event. Mark also coordinated delivery and setup of the Lancaster County Emergency Management equipment and resources to support the Red Cross first aid stations at the airshow. Mark's strong work ethic, attention to detail, and dedication made a significant contribution to the overall success of the Guardians of Freedom Airshow. He is deserving of the Commissioners' recognition, respectfully submitted, Jim David Sayer, Director.
Yeah, I really wanted to take this opportunity to give Mark some credit that he deserved. And the important thing to remember about all of this is, I didn't cut him any slack on all of his other responsibilities, since we started planning this almost a year ago. So, it's truly a monumental task, and when we think about how smoothly things went, even that weekend of the airshow, there were some weather issues with smoke from a forest fire several hundred miles away, something that you could never conceivably plan for, but everything that we had in place allowed us to, to work that in, and the show must go on, so to speak. So, as I said, I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to bring Mark's work to everyone's attention. We're very fortunate to have him as our Deputy Director of Emergency Management.
Question, well, first of all, congratulations on an event well-performed. The Salamander system you referred to, is that the system that we saw one time at a tabletop where you scan the cards in and everyone's wearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that accounts for, in case emergency, volunteer hours for reimbursement and tracking?
It all goes towards if it were to be a real disaster, we can do accountability of personnel, and obviously, the safety is the key part of it, but also, on the back end of any event which has a federal declaration, we can get time, accountability, not just for personnel, but also for equipment, and that's where the funding comes back into the county.
And you use this opportunity to train, then, some of your fellow emergency managers around, around the state on this program, so, well, again, congratulations. Larry?
Mark, I just want to congratulate you on this award, but for all the fine work that you've done over the years, and quite a workout for both of you with all the flooding this year and, and last year. But the airshow was a tremendous success. I mean, there were a lot of people out there, it was well-planned, and, you know, the smoke rolled in on Saturday and they had to cancel the Blue Angels, but the rest of the show up until the smoke came in was just, just awesome. And the planning and the way it was put together are a real credit to all of you working together. It took a lot of agencies, a lot of people to put this together, but it's great that we have a team that we can rely on, and ongoing work that you both do. Thank you, and congratulations.
Well, again, thank you so very much for, for all that work, countless hours, a lot of time, and we appreciate that so much. A round of applause? Yes.
I think so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Number four is old business. This is utility permit number 1425, allowing windstream communications since all new fiber optics in area of North Fortieth Street and Raymond Road, there is no cost to the county. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this utility permit, number 1425. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five, new business. Five A is a contract between Fastenal Company, the city of Lincoln, and Lancaster County using the State of Nebraska contract number 14284 OC to provide industrial supplies. Term of the contract shall be effective upon execution through February 28th, 2017. Pricing will be pursuant to the state contract. Cost of the county is not to exceed $10,000.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract with Fastenal Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a contract between Constructors Inc. and Lancaster County for 2016 paving and servicing on county projects 15-13, 15-24, and 16-06. Cost of the county is $3,212,261.84. Work shall commence on May 16th, 2016, and conclude by November 1st, 2016.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, as you remember, this is the contract for the new pavement for the year, which is old Cheney from the edge of the pavement on the east portion of the county to the county line, Denton Road, from, West Denton Road from the edge of the pavement to the western county line, and then Bluff Road from 148th to the interstate viaduct. And so, we did have $3 million in the budget this year for this pavement. 3.2 and some change is, is where this contract comes in. We will make up for that in other areas in our budget so that we don't go over, and I would recommend awarding this contract.
Deb?
A question with regards to the start date. It says May 16th, so we're kind of a few weeks behind. Do you think that the project will be concluded by November 1st?
Commissioner Shore, I do. We have some nuances going on with this project. Because of Camp Crease Thrasher Days, we can't start the Bluff Road project until after the third week in July, and we have some coordination issues with Seward County and the additional mile of, of Denton Road that is to be constructed in their jurisdiction, and so, there's some coordination issues, and I do think we're gonna be...
And weather is always a concern, you know, we have that little asterisk.
And barring dramatic, dramatic weather, which I cannot forecast.
Larry?
Well, I would move approval because these are long-needed projects, and congratulate the county engineer for bringing them forward.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve this contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a licensing agreement with Swank Motion Pictures Inc. for showing video cassette movies at the Youth Services Center. This county will pay $400 for the license. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2017.
Michelle Schindler, Lancaster County Youth Services Center, just here to answer any questions you may have. Just briefly, this is an agreement. We show movies and we broadcast them through a multiplexer, and this just ensures that we don't violate any rules that would make it a commercial showing.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this licensing agreement with Swank Motion Pictures. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an amendment to county contract C-13-151 with the Lincoln Journal Star for publishing legal notices and all other verbiage necessary to conduct county and city business. The amendment renews the contract from April 9th, 2016 through, through April 8th, 2017. The estimated cost for services to, to the county is not to exceed $28,500.
Move approval.
Second. Moving second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Lincoln Journal Star. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is an amendment to county contract C-14-8 with Fire Spring for the anti-re requirements of offset printing and related services. The estimated expenditures for this contract will be reduced by $5 per hour for the remainder of the contract term.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to, with Fire Spring. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an amendment to county contract C-13-341 with Allen Gibbs and Hewlock LC for auditing services for all Lancaster County funds and officers and the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission. The amendment renews the contract from July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2017. The estimated cost of the services will be increased by 2.5%. The estimated cost for the services to the county is not to exceed $221,000.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I received a call this morning from the department, and they asked this to be delayed, so I asked for a delay for one week until we can get some details cleaned up on the amendment.
Okay. All right, well, then we will just, yes?
Just was kind of interesting, the escalator for this year, was that negotiated? Because that seems to be higher than CPI.
That's in the original contract, there's a 2.5% escalator.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, then we'll just delay it for one week, then. Do we need a motion on that, or not? I don't think so.
I would move that we table item F for one week.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second that we ta, that we table item F for one week. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, consent items. Receive and place on file the following reports. County Sheriff, April 2016. County Clerk, May 2016. Clerk of the District Court, May 2016. Setting of a public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building regarding manager application for Roderick Lynn in connection with a Class C K liquor license for Sisasa's Temple at 1050 Sawtilla Road, Roca, Nebraska. Setting of a public hearing, or public hearings on Tuesday, June 28th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building regarding county special permit number 15064 for Avalon Event Paradise at 12788 West Roca Road, Crete, Nebraska, and county special permit number 16021 for Hillside Events at 12400 West Denton Road, Denton, Nebraska.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the consent items? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number seven is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none of them generally may do so at this time.
Gary Aldridge, Lincoln, Nebraska. Nine hours. I use my time for a point of personal privilege, perhaps more a point of personal pride, regarding Staff Sergeant Aaron Marshall Aldridge, youngest son of Margaret and Gary Aldridge. Notice the order. My wife first. The natal knowledge, ability, and skills of our sons reflects her genome. She did the heavy lifting. Sergeant Aldridge, formerly G Company 2135, General Service Aviation Battalion, Nebraska Army National Guard, accepted a position with G Company 2104 GSAB, United States Army, at the same rank and pay. The position is temporary. A transfer ceremony occurred Friday last in Lincoln at the Guard Military Reservation. Remarks were provided. Some of you were there. I have photographs. The band of Sisters and Brothers, G 2104 GSAB, debarked, departed aboard Blackhawk helicopters 100 hours local time, 5 June. Outbound journey subject to military planning, Fort Hood, Texas, transit to Gulf, final destination KAF, Kandahar Airfield, Islamic Republic of Afghanistan. The estimated return, both route and date open, spring 2017. Life is cluttered with risk, more so these days in a place like Afghanistan. I confess, and I speak for my wife, this makes me nervous, anxious, and uneasy. I am not paralyzed. I am not unmindful, which is to say, I am mindful. Afghanistan, Afghanistan seems largely untamed and/or disordered. I suspect the role and mission of this band of Sisters and Brothers in a country where transport by helicopter is rapid and efficient, is providing rapid and, rapid and efficient transport by helicopter for a military and civilian population. Alas, death is never far from life. Each compete in a zero-sum game. In this affair, there is after all one brightness. A band of Sisters and Brothers from the Wyoming Army Guard will be replaced and displaced homework. It is probably safe to say, as the Wyoming Guard could not, the Nebraska Guard will not repair or make Afghanistan whole. I hope the effort now will require others travel this pla, this path less often. To my son and the band of Sisters and Brothers, what can a parent or anyone offer that does not appear weak and fruitless? Father to son going in harm's way. Afghanistan will not be much fun. This is serious business. Do your job, keep your head down, don't be a hero. Son to father, I'll be home soon. Nine hours is the approximate time or clock difference between Nebraska and Afghanistan.
Gary? Yeah, and on behalf, as a, as a general officer, retired general officer, please extend the thanks of a grateful nation to your son for his dedicated service. He is going into a very dangerous area, and what he is doing as far as medical evacuation is crucial to the lives of people, because it is that golden hour that is the difference oftentimes between life and death. And so, we do, excuse me, we do appreciate his, his dedication and his service. We appreciate your support of your son. Thank you.
Next is number eight, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June 9th, 2016, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next further meeting on Tuesday, June 14th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 14th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in room, in room 112 of the county city building regarding a Class C liquor license application for Blue Sam Tree Farm, 5895 West Bragg Road, Crete, Nebraska. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on 5-City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under 5-City TV, Video On Demand, or 5-City TV, 5-City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilcham?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, and we will move on then towards the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda item one, our minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, May 31st, 2016.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.